Good morning, everybody, and welcome to Service 20 Minutes Neighborhood Practice Network. And I think this is our eighth, seventh or eighth meeting of all of us who have an interest in 20 minute neighborhoods. Thank you for joining us this morning. We have two interesting groups speaking this morning about different aspects of 20 minute neighborhoods. And I think since we last met, our last meeting, we looked at work that was being done in Perth and in Glasgow. And since then, I think that was December, we already had a had sight of the NP, the final version of NPA four before it was adopted by Parliament. And it has now become official Scottish government policy from the 13th of February. And I think the slide that I shared with you, our last event is now the law in in planning terms. And but I would say one of the things that I have been talking about when I'm talking about 20 minute neighborhoods quite a lot is that 20 minute neighborhoods are not a planning issue. And or they're not just a planning issue. And while there's been a lot of focus on the concept within a within a planning policy because of the drafting of NPA four. And that's just one part of how 20 minute neighborhoods can or should be delivered. And it's a holistic approach. It's the place principle that will be necessary to apply to make sure that 20 minute neighborhoods are delivered. And and the speakers that we've got this morning are going to be looking at different aspects of the 20 minute neighborhoods. One aspect in a sort of place based way, and one around public perceptions around how their places already work. And some of the barriers that may exist in delivering 20 minute neighborhoods, particularly in getting public engagement. And our politics accept as a concept, whether there are other barriers that have not been dealt with within their local area. And so this morning, we are looking at Stratton Forest Development Trust and their approach, which I would say predates 20 minute neighborhoods as the the label. And and it obviously takes us more into a rural delivery of 20 minute neighborhoods, which I suppose from the Scottish government's perspective falls under the living well locally. A concept after which we are hearing from Living Streets, who some of you recall spoke to us last year. When they were at the early stage of some research and how communities navigate their existing spaces. And Andorquerties joined us from Living Street because the report that they did with North Lanacher and some other areas was released just a couple of weeks ago. We did have on the agenda Scottish government, the Scottish government are drafting guidance on the 20 minute neighborhood policy, additional guidance, which will go out to public consultation. And they had hoped that the guidance would be ready for today, the draft guidance. And so that today would be an opportunity to have a first look at it and to talk about it. But as with many things and for many reasons, that has been delayed. But we hope that a future meeting will be able to platform that so that people can give feedback as to the relevance of the guidance to how 20 minute neighborhoods are delivered. That's all from me this morning, from at this point. And I'm now going to hand over to Gareth Jones and Tony Foster, the Chair and Chief Executive of Stratford Forest Development Trust, to talk about their approach to 20 minute neighborhoods and their part of the world. So Gareth, over to you, if you want to start sharing your screen.
Yeah, we'll do. Yeah, thanks very much. So Tony, if you'll introduce yourself while I get the screenshot, screen sorted.
Yeah, my name's Tony Foster. I'm the Chief Executive of Stratford Forest Community Trust. I've been in post for two years. And we have a wee presentation for you just now.
Oh, yeah, my name is Gareth Jones. Told by my accent, I'm not Scottish. Spent my four to years down south, but then married a Scots woman and discovered that at a certain age, they all fly back home. So ended up in the Highlands in a little hamlet called Eregi. And for my sins, I've been Chair of the Community Trust for a year, a year now, but Vice Chair for three years, which is essentially a period of time that I've been working with this with this team. So, yeah, so so just in terms of 20 minute neighborhoods, we've been aware of that concept, but had already started to work out. How, as we invested the money that we get from the wind farms, which is around about three quid a million pounds a year. How we could use that money to revitalize the the community. So what you will find is that we'll we'll talk about 20 minute neighborhood in a very ill informed way. But I think talking to you and there's a kind of a really nice coincidence over some of the theory around it and what we're what we're actually doing. So the presentation essentially tells our story. So we give you a little bit of context. And then we get into how actually we do, I've got the slide there is regeneration. How do we partly through 20 minute neighborhoods, but how actually do we? Make sure that the money that we we get from in farms is is well, well invested in in the community. So I'll just kick off with just a little bit about whereabouts we are. So let me just pop forward slightly. Yeah, so Google World, thank you very much indeed, where the where the red, the red flag is. Whitebridge, that's essentially sort of the center of the area where the trust, where the trust operates. You can see that it's it's well to the north of the Highlands and we're about 30 minutes away from Inverness, God bless it. A city, as you will discover, at times we might just want to be 100 miles away from Inverness in terms of accessing resources by the by the community. Tony, anything else you want to add there?
No, that's fine. Keep going.
Good. All right. So it's as you'd expect, it's a rural community, it's South Loch Ness, it's a bit of a hidden, a hidden gem. This is a beautiful photograph of what effectively the monoliths and the monoliths is a row of hills, which is is owned by half a dozen land owners. As you'd expect, there's the typical country sports there, but those hills then sandwiched, we're sandwiched by Loch Ness on the other side. And effectively, we're a strath which for anybody knows, it's strath is formed by a river, as 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 opposed to a glen, which is formed, formed by 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 glaciers. So it's a, it's a wide, long strath, about 10 miles along, in which our community, our community lives. And as I, as I say, a bit of a hidden gem. Tony, you're going to talk about tourism?
Yeah, so it's probably an undiscovered area of Scotland. Most of the activities regarding tourism on the other side of the the Loch. And but it it's starting to be discovered. Part of that comes from COVID and people looking for wilder areas to investigate. But it also comes from infrastructure and investment coming from external people who've discovered it from Glasgow or from down south, who've taken over what used to be spit and sawdust hotels. And changing them into small, unique boutique hotels. But there's other, there's other tourism groups starting to take over and also including, including ourselves. But obviously, in a, in a manageable way, if we can, if we can, so it is becoming, it's quite embryonic tourism. And it's bringing obviously employment to the local area and new schools to the local area.
Yeah, so there's a nice opportunity for us to really build the tourism effectively on this side to bring, bring some, some wealth and income into the into the area. Bottom right, critical photograph, of course, we form what is now affectionately known or not, depending on your point of view, as the, as the ring of steel. There are 400 turbines around Loch Ness now, and we've got probably, I would think, 400, we've got a quarter of those in our area. So we get substantial income from the turbine, from the turbine companies, which of course the the trust was established by the Community Council with the responsibility for spending, spending wisely. Tony?
Yeah, so this is the information that we use particularly for a lot of our funders and we'll come into more detail about that a little bit later. But Stratford Forest has a population of about 800 people, about 400 homes. It's got some issues when it comes to the Scottish Index of Multiple Deprivation in terms of its indicators, travel times to schools, shops, surgeries, et cetera, and access to broadband. And in fact, it was the trust who has helped provide broadband in the local area. And we've just passed that on to the person who helped us develop that. But we were obviously waiting around for some of the work that was to be done through the Scottish government work, but it was taking too much time. So we decided to go and progress that ourselves and it's been, it's been very useful, particularly during COVID. And we're below average in terms of education, skills and housing indicators. And compared with Scotland as a whole, our community is just below average on all that. So the data shows that our community is in the most deprived 10% Scottish data zones.
Yeah, for for access to services. And then the 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 map on the right is the community is essentially six hamlets connected by some pretty rubbishy roads. So and that partly is is driving the 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 20 minute strategy. Tony?
Yeah, again, this is probably more to do with our, our population. We've got quite an aging population up here. I think one of the most interesting slides here is the Scottish average of people who are sort of 16 to 29. And perhaps stay in their own area, but here they they obviously do leave. And as as Gareth said right at the beginning, they don't tend to come back until later on in life, because they they love the Highland life. And in terms of social and rented accommodation, we're quite low in that respect as well. There's a lot more owner occupied houses here. So that creates a bit of an issue, both for tourism and any other business that wants to come into the area. And also any kind of 20 minute neighborhood policy that we may introduce. Obviously, we're going to be opening up new facilities. We may have central services, but each building will probably have some members of staff, but not necessarily going to be paid huge amounts of salary. And that can prove quite difficult in terms of getting accommodation locally and creates a problem if they have to travel to Inverness to the there. So this is a piece of work that we have to do in terms of providing socially rented homes and rented homes for people who want to work in those industries, industries, particularly tourism, who who could be transitional. But also young, making sure that younger people have the opportunity to come back, because that is a is a bit of a barrier. And creating the facilities so that they can come back, because it's not necessarily about the need for housing, it's about the facilities that don't exist in the area. It's one of the reasons that they don't come back to Stratford Forest.
So a lot of this data is taken from our action plan, which we put together, which which starts to paint a picture of where our our focus should be in terms of the sort of services that we provide. The the trust itself is, it essentially was established about, about 12 years ago. And we'll talk about this, the obviously a board of directors, it's a limited company. And there's, there's 10 of us that that sit on the board, making the decisions. And one thing we'll talk about in a second is that we've had to really change the focus in order to respond to criticism from the community, but we'll we'll pick that up. One thing that we have done over the last three years is put in place a significant team of professionals. Tony?
Yeah, so I think when I first came on board, there was two members of staff. And there's now, I think, 10 members of staff for for full time equivalents. We take on a project officer to help take projects forward and keep on top of the thing so they don't slip. We've got a community liaison officer who works quite closely with the community and and an administrator who helps support the governance of the board. We've, we used to have a volunteer finance person, but now we've employed somebody to do that because the amount of funds that we're dealing with is quite high. We, communications was an important area and we've got external funding for that. We've got somebody to manage our facilities that we're taking on these hubs and a cleaner, of course. And I suppose the only indulgence that we have is is fundraisers. We'll come to those a little bit later on. But I I think it's quite clear that there was a, there was a decision that a number of organizations like ourselves. If you go anywhere within Scotland, they'll tell you that core costs are the the most important thing that we have need to cover. And when you've got an income of three quid a million, then you can deal with the core costs so that there's a balance in terms of stakeholders that you work with. It's an, it's an equal relationship, whereas for many communities is, you know, you're dealing with volunteers or people who are in a certain life stage and only have a certain amount of time to do things. Taken that view to to bring on staff. So we've taken on two fundraisers, because it's quite clear, it doesn't matter how much funds you have, there's always a higher expectation. And and we need to get funding from elsewhere for the projects that we want to take forward.
Lovely. Okay, so just a little bit of, just a little bit of background, a new board was elected in 2019. Basically, we put some kind of rigor around the the way we were proposing to distribute the community funds. We developed a relatively rudimentary vision, which is around community housing amenities, enterprises and and transport. But in those days, what were a real important focus was providing doorstep benefits. It's really curious that although quite a number of people have cars, there's still a reluctance to drive 20 minutes to go to a gym or to drive 20 minutes to to go to, to go to an event. And based on the research that we did, it was really important that people could actually get to stuff quickly. Now, that was, that then drove the strategy around putting in place community hubs. Already the trust had picked up probably on more of an entrepreneurial basis, one or two properties. This this place here is Wildside. This is the bottom, bottom left. And that, that was an education center which had been laid empty for eight or nine years. But what we did was we said, okay, right, we've got these hamlets, let's make sure there's something in walking distance or a five minute car drive. And so we already had had Wildside, we had the opportunity of acquiring Foyers Bay and and putting a sort of a boating club in there. We had, this is a, this is a field close to Loch Ness, and I'll show you where I think he went with that. This is the, this is the gun club you'd expect for obviously a community that's got a lot of field sports. And there was, there was an opportunity to buying, buying a church. But as you can see, the idea was was to pick up a property that was close to the main concentrations of of people. I say concentrations, it would be 100 people, 140 people, so not, not big numbers. We then did a little bit of visioning, created a, created a master plan, because what we wanted to do was make sure that each each hub provided a set of resource, a social place effectively where people could meet. And this is in the context of a place that used to have 20 churches and it used to have two, three pubs, as we know, all of these have closed and not a lot replaced them. So we're kind of thinking that we needed to put that sort of infrastructure back in place. And the vision that emerged, you can see here, was yes, having a common purpose around people meeting, but also then having a unique role. So we could build it, we could, we could build a set of resources. So God bless our architect, we asked him to, if they would visualize the, the the strategy that we were, what we're, the vision that we were mapping out. And we got some really beautiful slides and it's all very easy, isn't it? If you've got a slide, you've got a solution. So we're all very excited by this, but I'll, I'll bring this back to reality in a moment. So but some really nice visualization of how we were going to develop these, develop these hubs. Yeah, so reality, this brings us back to this dark space that most organizations find themselves in on a routine basis. The previous board had collapsed in bitter arguments, so we had to reconstitute the board, complete absence of volunteers. This was, this was pre-COVID, but it's obviously, it's a real issue around getting volunteering these days. Baker Manager Post, we pulled in Tony. We're also suffering from a constant poisonous drip of criticism on Facebook, you know, seek, did Cabal, got the money, why they just give us all 2,000 quid each, opaque decision making. So there was a lot of, a lot of work to be done to create some trust paradox, isn't it? We're called a trust, there was a complete absence of trust. So effectively, what we've done over the last three years has been a kind of a play with four acts. The first one that we were, that Tony was just talking about was, was, was professionalizing the business. And that's, that's, that's was essentially making sure that we've got a good team of people in post that could manage, manage the business effectively. Second thing was, which we have been talking about, was building the infrastructure. And we purchased, we did, we did purchase the church, we purchased a foresty hut. And this is again, just to complete this map of of community hubs, as I say here, keeping faith with with doorstep benefits. What's, what's interesting is as we're, as we're growing, we're taking on more and more complex, complex projects. And we'll talk about the, what this drives in terms of our, our needs, needs going forward. So this is just a couple of examples, we've got planning permission for the facilities on the left hand side, sports amenity that we were putting in place. And then the church itself is a restoration project, with spending 350,000 in the first phase on saving the place actually from falling down. And then phase two, which we'll raise funds separately for, which will be around about 1.7 million, will be for a conversion into a center which will support heritage, crafts and biodiversity and biodiversity. But it's really interesting, we're now finding as a relatively small group, we're now starting to take on a kind of projects that traditionally you'd have expected the local government to do or central government to do. But we can see there's this shift happening where this big stuff is now being picked up by very small community groups. So two other, the two, the two other acts, act three was community engagement. As I said earlier, there was a massive trust deficit, so constant dialogue with community for the last couple of years. Tony will talk about engaging their lifestyles, big investment in 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 comms. We're using stuff like CRM tools in order that we can communicate as effectively as possible. But critically, obviously, what we've been down the road of an action plan. And we brought in an independent voice partly to coach us, because we're all bloody control freaks, to go to us to really get into the mode where we have to push control from the board down into the community. And that's the slider at the bottom. Act one was high control, we're now moving to act four, which will be low or no control where we can in order to engage and invigorate local community action. So, so yeah, act four, which is, which is the phase we're now moving into now, is essentially through the approach to the community action plan. We're enabling and driving and supporting the community to really take control. So Tony, do you want to just, your, your thoughts on these two, on these two steps?
Yeah, well, there's a couple, a couple of things on the other two as well. What was really important for us was to have a project manager for a lot of these hubs that we were doing. And the reason that we wanted to bring a project manager on was, we are obviously working with stakeholders, et cetera, local authority, forestry, high life, Highland, et cetera. But we also needed to make sure that we were on it in terms of planning. So we would have somebody there who could hound people all the way down the line so that we were maintaining what we would, what we were doing. Seemed to have lost your slide there, Gareth.
Yeah, no, I'm just going to the website, keep going.
And then it was quite important for us that, it's probably worth noting that although Nick came on board to do the, 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 the community action plan and the, and following that, the place plan, so we could create visuals of the areas so people knew what they could look like within 10, 15 years' time. That the board did let, let go a little bit of what the vision was that they'd already established in their minds. And then we worked with Nick and challenged Nick as well as when he was producing the plans to make sure that they were as robust as we could possibly make them. And a large part of that is to do with consult, consultation, because we know when we're putting all these facilities into place, there are going to be dissenting voices, depending on where the houses are going or where the, where the new facility is going. And the, the difficulty for a community board is that sometimes those people are your friends, sometimes you will find it very difficult to argue against something. And you need to think bigger picture in terms of what does the whole community want? And that's what the community action plan and the local place plan provides. And and then in terms of the the fourth slide that Gareth showed you, obviously, what, he used the term trusting the trust, which kept on being this phrase that people use. But then I started to realize when we were going through the process that the only people who were saying that were ex-directors of the board. And I got the impression that it was not so much that they, they didn't trust the trust, they just wanted to get involved somehow. And but they didn't want to have the responsibility of being on the board. So what we did was evolve power a little bit further and create action groups so that the community could get involved in housing or pathways or whatever. And then embryonically, we would see if a leader came out of those particular groups to take those things forward. Then suddenly, we have a wider volunteer, just the board, working on high complex projects. And then the board just determines what the budget is that they're going to work with. And they take that budget and they work with, with developing the particular, the particular projects. The next step to all that is, this is kind of high all, high level stuff. But what we need is also people who just want to do activities. What we've, we've discovered during this process is it's not about the building and the hub, it's about what's going on outside it as well. And we talked earlier on about Eregi and heritage and biodiversity, and that's not necessarily in the structures of the building, that's out with the building. And we can run activities and get funding for activities to let people engage with these projects in some way. And then when they're finally built, they have a place to go to, but they can still do activities prior to that. And then as a board, we just think, well, that's that, that's that property built. But we need to note in terms of sustainability, we need to change, change that or adapt that, say, in seven years' time. So that it keeps regenerating itself to the future. So it's not just about building it for this moment in time, it's about building it for the next life stages that people.
Yeah, true. So, so in in terms of creating that real sense of ownership, so we've got six hubs. We now need to get, encourage the community to take real control over their, their specific areas, what does happen on their, on their doorstep. And so Nick's helping us put together a, a local place plan. And we're just going through it through the process at the moment to getting contributions to the design of that, the design of that place plan. And we're now at the point where if I, if I go to the draft, we've got a draft. And the way we've, the way we've done it is to, to make it very visual. So this has been a consultation with each hamlet, and they themselves have with Nick created these maps that shows the things that they want to see put in place over the, over the next couple of years. So this is, and the, the piece we've got to put around, wrap around this is now what, what the governance is, because they are making decisions at hamlet level over what is it? So for instance, we desperately want 30, 30 mile an hour speed limits on the race we've got around us. So that's starting to get into transport policy. We have affordable homes, people decided where they would be happy to have afforded affordable homes, that's housing, that's housing policy. A lot of stuff around improving community green spaces, but we've gone down this road because we think it presented visually rather than in documents. We, and it is working, people are now commenting on these maps to Nick, and so he's constantly changing and updating them. So just a couple more minutes on the presentation and then we can take, take questions. So let me just, so 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 Tony, while I go back to the main slide, if you just pick up.
Yes, I mean, it's worth noting that this local place plan now will, so Stratford Forest is quite lucky, we have a community council which is elected. I fortunately worked in two areas out of many areas where the community council was actually elected, so there was an election for it. So it has a little bit of bite in terms of when it presents a plan, it has some meaning, which is quite important to us. And but the local authority has already given an indication that they will adapt this as part of the local development plan. And that's come a little bit from the work that Nick's done in terms of his relationship with the planners. But it's also come with all these action groups and all these initiatives that you see. The, the board does turn to community volunteers and skills and knowledge at a local level, but we also recognize that there are statues. That there are statutory, uh, or, or the groups that can help us deliver this and we've been working with them. So it's kind of been in tandem. Uh, so taking on this local development plan means there's been an ownership with everyone, uh, for, for this. So, uh, that will go into the local development plan, um, which is, I think it's been published for our area next year.
Yeah, so this is, this is back into the, as I say, the dark, the, the dark place, things are. It's sounding like a presentation all pretty smooth, while it's, as you know, it's not. Um, and we're looking at kind of what, a- a- as we get into more complex infrastructure projects, the financial management. Is becoming more complex. We're, we're looking at twenty-five year, um, cash flow plans, et cetera. Um, and s- and still there are insufficient number of volunteers coming forward, which we'll qualify in a second. So. The sort of support we need around and, and, and I, I, I think the more I think about it is twenty-minute neighbourhood strategy in terms of the. Six hamillets and empowering people to put in place the, um, the resources that they want. But sort of the support we're looking for at a higher level is, I call this trodden paths. We're going to buy turbines, we're going to have to invent all of that for ourselves. There's no central resource where we can go and get expertise and best, and best practice. There's a lot that could be done to enable these, these, these ultra-local, um, initiatives. To make it easier planning, we're treated like a developer, not as a partner, um, you know, we, for, for, for the. The sports immunity we were talking about, you know, all of a sudden we're, we're going to have to upgrade the roads to get there. So that was like three or four million quid before we'd started. As opposed to the local authority seeing this as a fantastic contribution to enhancing the lives of the local population. Massive drag on regeneration. It's two years to get planning permission for this stuff. Um, expert support, there's business cases, we do the education advisors, multiculturalists. This stuff does exist, it does sit at a higher level. But we're saying now push it down, push it lower, push it lower so that we can, we can do this as effectively as possible. Um. We do now have, volunteers are, are coming out of the world, the post-COVID effect is, is disappearing. Um, but there's kind of an epilogue to this story. Uh, we still need to find the, 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 the community leaders. The epilogue, which we won't get into because this will be for the next time is. We're now creating this kind of big hairy goals to really give something for the whole community to focus on, which is self-sufficiency by twenty thirty. And the critical thing why we feel confident we can move to this now is that we've. We've got the community groups in place, we've got what we call the volunteer army. We're building the community hubs. And the trust now is moving into this role as a central service. It's almost like a mini replication of, of central services that you'd get in, in, in a, in a corporate organisation. And the idea being that those professionals will, are now, their job is to support all the local organisations. Take away the grungy stuff, take away applying for licences. Take away all that health and safety stuff, we'll do that, leaving the local people to get on with the nice stuff, running, running, running the events. Um. And this is, this is kind of the final piece of the twenty-minute neighbourhood. Um. First of all, what's emerging, I don't know whether this is a zeitgeist or not, but this is one of the directors. And they're all, we're producing an eight-page newsletter for the community to kick off this conversation about self-sufficiency. And Chris here, he very quickly started talking about the Peckham experiment. I had never heard of this before, some of you will have done. This is how, um, healthcare was delivered before the National Health Service. And it was had a big focus on preventive health. This is like sixty, seventy years ago. He's saying, this is what we now need to return to, we need to take ownership. In the context of twenty-minute hubs, of delivering the sort of stuff, um. That would have been done locally, but then was taken over by the National Health Service. Um, so it's, it is, it is definitely, you can sense from conversations we're having, there's real appetite for this. And then the final piece of this story is, what a systems-based approach. How we then use these hubs so they work, um, on their own as, as social places. But then we're also trying to, uh, use them to trade. To kind of integrate some services. So for instance, simple example, there's a lot of venom on the hills here. So there is food created locally, big move to reduce, uh, food miles. We will employ an apprentice butcher and in one of the hubs we'll run cookery lessons. So you can see how this kind of self-sufficiency starts to become self-generating. There are skilled craftspeople, they're not capable of applying for big projects, so. The trust will provide the tendering services so they don't have to do that complex stuff. We'll put in place a community sawmill so we can become more, far more self-sufficient and keep a lot of the funding we get. Uh, into a, a kind of a cycle economy internally. Another example is around biodiversity. We've started to buy polycrops, so these different communities can grow their, grow their own food. Um, so again, we can, we can start stepping towards community food. The core. Are the six hubs that we've put in place, that is not about buildings anymore. It's about energising and innovating the community that live around, live around those hubs. So final piece, appreciate the five minutes over, final piece. What is all about now? It used to be called civic duty. What we feel is our role. As facilitators is to generate agency, agency in the, in the, in the American sense. And naming people to own and take and, and use their own power to make a difference to the community locally. So that's it. Sorry it's slightly longer than we intended, but that's our story.
Thank you very much Gareth and, uh, Tony, and I don't think you've not really gone over time, um, and. It's clear that you're doing, it's a very ambitious project, uh, that you're engaging in. And so we're only up to any questions, um, from anybody who's attending. So if you have a question, um. Raise your hand if you want to say it orally or, or put it in the chat. And I suppose, I suppose. Underpinning all this, this was my first question is going to be. You have seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds of thereabouts coming in annually through the wind farm. How long has that been coming in and how long do you have that, um? How long will that be coming in for?
So it's been, it's been coming in for six years and it's a twenty-five-year, twenty-five-year agreement. But they're, they're now applying for five and ten-year extensions. So we imagine, and now whether we'll continue to receive it, I don't know, but we, we, we imagine that, that, that money will continue to come in. However. A third of the money that does come in, we're putting into a legacy fund, we've got an investment company. That's creating a, 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 um, yeah, a, a fund for the future, so that. If that money does stop, we'll have between ten and twelve million and use the interest off that. To continue to support services. So we're, we're looking at a fifty-year timescale.
And I suppose the other, the other aspect there is, you and is, well, there's two things really, one. Um, SSC who are one of the main funders, I think they've been pretty much given a steer by Scottish government, but I may, I may be wrong that they have to provide some level of investment. Wind turbines. And I've given them a, a model that, 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 that was potentially for, for, for another area which they, they can, can consider, but. I would say community benefit is, is kind of crumbs from the table really. It's, it's missed, it is a missed opportunity for many communities. Um, that, uh, there's an opportunity to invest and. And that, that model is not a community benefit or a community shares model, it is actually a, a, a model which is. Based on when they're going out to investors to get money for those turbines. That they get the money for the community and then they give the community what is a non-recourse loan. Um, to, to, so that the investment is already there and then the community pays that back from, from, from that virtual turbine, if you like. And the, um. Uh, uh, and, and you know, there are other models that could be followed, um, uh. For those areas that don't necessarily have wind turbines that could benefit each community, because I think what you. What you might have discovered from this presentation is that. At, at a local level, and if you enhance the, the, the people you have around you, you can deliver a lot more with a lot less. Uh, and that, and that is largely, um, non-statutory stuff as well. Okay, interesting. There's been some comments, the comments are saying thank you and it's a great presentation, it's a really coherent vision that you have, but Sir Tell, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm sure I work for the CNPA, County National Park. And, um, I wonder if you could tell a little bit about, um, the relations, how you develop relations with the landowners. You obviously purchased assets like the buildings, et cetera. Uh, I, I, I assume, and in earlier in your presentation, you touched on. Uh, the, the estates and, and landowners and I wonder if you could tell a bit more about that.
Yeah, so it's interesting that, um. We've got, there's, there's, there's the main road that runs down and that connects the, that connects the, the various communities, the, the six hamillets that we talk about. And most of our work is with. With that group and that population, which is probably ninety percent of the population. And what we're doing is in quite an entrepreneurial way, is when we see there's a, there's, there's a, there's an opportunity to purchase a building that's consistent with the strategy that we've got. We effectively, we effectively go for it. It's really weird in that we have little contact with the estate owners. Um, we had a breakthrough last year when, when one of the, the six estates running along there and they're pretty well. Self-contained, but we're doing three things to engage them. Um, the first one is that one of the estate owners volunteered to, um, provide a field. So for the first time, we ran a Highland gathering. So, and it's interesting, this is where having the money does make a hell of a difference because. With that cost twelve grand to run, the first one is going to cost eighteen grand to run the second one, so we can provide that free to the community. And they've done it because the, I think, the estate owners realise they're coming under intense pressure. Around A biodiversity and B blood sports. So, so they are now, I think, starting to reach into the community and do stuff so we can see that, we can see their ben- we, we. We can then, we can then see that, see that, see their benefit. Um, the second thing is that one of the hubs is the, is the gun club and we're, we're going to put money into that. So that they can make that much more of a social space and then that becomes a gathering, a gathering place for the, the staff. I mean, substantial staff, as you could imagine. Um, dealers and actors and all the rest of it, they're employed quite on, on the hills. So that's the way in which we're endeavouring to engage them. And I'm not sure that answers your question, but it's, it, it, there's a gap, we have to close.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much. Um, Nick Marshall, you have a question.
Yeah, um, thanks. It's been a really interesting, um, uh, session so far and what I'd like to ask you is about the early stages. Uh, and, um, um, basically about how you got yourself set up. Uh, in, in particular, what organisations you, uh, and people, you got help and, uh, advice and. Maybe went to, to visit or, uh, uh, learn from. And then, uh, just a second question, the local place plan. Um, how, how did you get permission to do that or how, did you actually have to push the council or, uh? You know, how did that happen?
So go on Tony, if you pick up the second question, I'll, I'll, I'll think of the first. That's quite nicely both that, isn't it? You've got to be off the hoof.
Um, so, uh. We did the commu- was, so I have a background in, uh, well, before I came into development trusts, um, I've worked for three now. Uh, I had a background in the university student, student association, so. Had a, a, a background in that and, and. Both working exactly the same way in my mind, but, um, in terms of the, uh, so the community action plan was, was, was produced. And there was a need to do that because there was questions around what the trust was doing with the, the funds. And, um, uh, so there was a feeling that, that, that they needed to do a professional community action plan, which many organisations across Scotland have, have, have done. And when we were in conversations with Nick, um, he talked about, um, he talked about, uh, place plans. And in my mind and in Gareth's mind, it, that was, um, the, the actual community action plan was very documented, it was the. The usual kind of document that you would, you would do as a consultant and maybe you'd put it on a shelf or whatever, but we wanted to visualise it, make it come alive. And so we, we suggested doing the place plans and. And we never asked anybody's permission, we just told, we were already working with the local authority on that and saying. We're doing this piece of work, would you find it useful? Yes. Now, it didn't come from the board though. You might have remembered that I talked about when we did the community action plan. We started action groups for each theme. And I suggested whether the local place plans sounded like a good idea to members of the community. And what came through there is yes, that's exactly what we're looking for. And then we took that to the board, they agreed to, to, to fund the local place plan. And then we, we took it on, on board to do it and the con- consultation from that. But at the same time, we were informing the local authority that we were going to do it and that. It would, it would save them time and money to take that plan because it was fairly robust and then. We could work together on delivering it.
Yeah, I think it's worth, it's, it's worth saying that, so this then, from a staff view perspective, will be a plan that local authority has to consult. Uh, and so what we don't know, and this is what will emerge, is to what degree can we now drive? Now, there is a community council which obviously has a statute of responsibility. But essentially, what we want to do is we're going to have a big, we're going to have a big, um, community barbecue. Um, we're going to have two parties a year where we're going to get, you know, like a hundred people together. And hopefully they will then start to become, there, there was a strand in, 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 in the community action plan called organising ourselves. And, and that, that got no traction whatsoever. Um, and that's, and that's, and that was partly because although people criticised the trust, they kind of, it was a bit of a, a child parent relationship. They still look to the trust to sort stuff. So what we, where we think we're going to go is you see if we can really get ownership of those local plans. So they then become the drivers, what happens in this area. And they have to be, and this is, this is all part of kind of the true, um. Uh, localism, uh, uh, ultra-local agenda that we're trying to, that we're try, we're, we're trying to drive. Um, I wouldn't underestimate the contribution that Nick's made to us, some of you may know him. He, he, he's worked in this public social space for years and he's done a lot of work around it, um, putting together action plans. And he's got good contacts into, certainly into the Highland Council, in, into central government as well. So he's a bit of a window on that, on that more complex world that we have to interface with. You're, yeah, so do you want to follow a question? I'll, I'll ask, I'll answer your first one.
I suppose, Nick, how's, are there some useful hints in the, um, chat as well, Nick? Uh, for, there's further information on local place plan. For some of these, my, the chat isn't working for me to actually direct message my colleague Emma. Um, but the, our place website has details on local place plans as well. And the Planning Aid Scotland are currently, and they are providing training for communities on local place plan formation. They've been doing it in Fife and I know that they are currently doing their advertising for the second tranche on some of the training. Where they think bring, try and bring seven communities together, uh, to do training around local place plans. Um, so hopefully that's some help for you there. Tristan, you have a question?
Um, yeah, yeah, it was just to follow up on the, the community benefit stuff, um. Where, where I kind of worked just now, there's, there's some planning applications gone in around, um, building new student accommodation. Um. And from, from a big, big, you know, company from London and, you know, it's currently going through. You know, there's a petition to stop it from happening, um, but as. As the, the, a similar process happened in, in Gorgin Dalry, kind of nearer to where I live. Um, where the motion was rejected to build new student accommodation, but I think it was overturned by, by Scottish government. I'm, I'm thinking this, uh, planet, these planet applications are going to go through in the area I work as well and. You know, is it too late for us to kind of ask for some community benefit or? If it's going to go through anyway, is there still an opportunity that we think? Where, where us as a community council, um. And, and, and the kind of local residents can say, okay, you're going to go through this building anyway. Can we actually get something out of it to kind of make improvements where we are?
Um, so you're talking about the sort of. Section seventy-five kind of money type thing from properties coming into your area. I mean, ours was from wind turbines and hydro, um, but I do know of a. I think there's a place in, I think it's Winchborough. And they had houses being built in their area and they managed to unlock some of the funding that, that. The council were getting from the, uh, housing developer for facilities within that area. For the community, well, it wasn't, I don't think it was the community council, I think it was for the trust. But the, the, I think the community council and the trust may have worked together to achieve that. Um, it's quite hard, I would think. I think you have to be, you know, right there at the beginning. So if it hasn't been. Given any, any, uh, planning yet, it's, it's maybe worth a conversation with your local authority.
Yeah. I'll make a slight, I'll, I'll make a, not slight, a very big political point. Um. I'm new to the Highlands, um, the Highlands are very poor. At getting value from what they have, this has gone back two hundred years. Um, the estates are owned by obviously landlords that live, lived out, lived outside, have been historically. For me, the wind farms are not that much different. We've now got global companies that benefit from the stuff they've done on the hills. It will become a very emotional topic. Because what we get as, as community benefit is like Grayson paper. There is no legislation that requires them. To contribute to local community. It's their generosity. Um, and I think that's going to change. Because as local government is, is progressively underfunded, we will look to the natural resources that exist. Certainly in, in the Highlands and definitely in Scotland. To start to make substantial contribution to the infrastructure which is progressively deteriorating. So new government, and it's not, it's not, it's not. So new government, and it's not, it's not, it's not an independence argument. This is just, I think, about how we distribute the new wealth that's emerging. From, from renewables. So to your point, you have to go and ask politely for benefit. That has to change.
And I think there's, there's also, I mean, there may be a conflict that Mike, I think someone's asked the question. How do you fit or not with council place, property asset, infrastructure expenditure, investment in your local area? And the answer is, we don't, we want to have a meaningful conversation. For the direction of that for the future and that's an equal partnership. Where, you know, we have the people uh, all around the table and we have a co- conversation. But I think there is a move, uh, and, you know, community trusts aren't stupid, community isn't stupid. We know that there's a lot, there's a lack of investment into local authorities, there's a lot of buildings being closed down. And at the same time, some local authorities are trying to work with development trusts to keep those buildings open by looking for external funding. But the truth is, they weren't sustainable when they were under the local authority. Why would they be sustainable under the community? That's the community's view. We're not here to keep buildings open, that's standing still. What we're here to do is develop and create a, a situation where we sustain those buildings for the future. So they don't necessarily run into rack and ruin, or they develop as people go through their life stages and they change as they do. So we were talking about investment earlier on and part of our investment is not only just to build these hubs, whereas to keep. Funds available so that we can change them in a rolling programme every sort of seven years, which any business would do. Whether it's a pub or whether it's a hotel or whatever, you would always continually invest in your infrastructure. Um, and it's interesting because both of you have talked about in your presentation that you're not saving buildings. You're providing, you're looking at what the needs of the community are and you're providing activity and, and participation around needs that you've identified. Um, and then there are buildings that fulfil those needs and actually even the way you talked about it, this, what happens around the building becomes more important than the building itself. And which is an interesting observation and ties in. I suppose, so where do you draw the line? Because obviously I suppose Strontin can build a school, a local school. Where do you draw, and some of the, I can't remember if it was the twenty-minute neighborhood, but one event that we hosted, actually it was one of our conferences. So a discussion with the development trust on the, on the Western Isles, or in the way, them having to, the community trust having to come together and say to the local authority. This isn't, with, this is not our job, this is your job. So do you have a sort of line of where you draw, where you think?
Yeah, yeah, so.
The local government has one.
Yeah, so our, our constitution disallows us from spending money uh, in areas where there is another funder. So, so that's a very, that's a very straight, that's a very straight line. And I think what's been, what's been, so, so Nick, Nick is our conduit into, in, into. The Highland Council, he's got good contacts there, which has established an informal conversation. Um, but what has happened, which I think has been excellent, is that there was a moment, I think, where a local government thought, oh, here we go, wind farms. This is another source of income straight to us. But I think in the Highlands, the battle was won that no, that money should go to community to be compensated for the fact that. The steel stuff is being put on the hills and, and, and the Highland Council has held true to that. We can see a moment though, as they struggle more and more for funding, where there will be political pressure, I think, for that money to be not necessarily diverted. But we're always having the back of our heads, we're going to wake up one morning and find, oh, different strategy here from central government on how that, how that, how that, how that money's spent. So that's something we, we, we will, we will fight, obviously very, very, very vigorously.
But, but, but what's interesting, Ewan, is you, you, you're touching on schools there. What the community action plan, the local place plan has allowed us to do is one of the things that came through the community action plan was schools. And one of our schools has a school roll of five pupils, one has a school roll of twelve pupils. But we know there's about a hundred kids within the local area who go to schools out with the area. And the reason they go there is because it's just easier for their parents to pick them up after school, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and we are, I talked about how we engage other stakeholders and we've had a meeting with the Education Department of Highland Council. And their policy and their current plan at the moment is not to shut any of these schools, it, it isn't on the horizon. And what we've suggested is, is, well, that's perfect because the cap has questioned school, so facilitation in the area. So we can um, facilitate a conversation between parents and carers. Who are working on some of our other projects like play parks and uh, after-school club and stuff with the local authority. And they can just have a conversation about school provision in the area without the threat of closure. It's just a conversation. How they determine that future is really up to them. Now, I might have an idea in my head of what I think they should do, which is totally controversial, but it will come from the community members. And then that way, if there is a policy to change what's the schooling is, it's not going to be a fight about we're going to close down schools, it's going to be a partnership. And it's the same with everything. It's like every time you cut a bus, bus service, a bus service is cut. But actually, if you ask the community members, they go, well, we would gladly paid another two pound for that bus service. Why is it, but why has someone just made a decision to cut it? We would have gladly used it because it took us to the hospital. And now there, now there isn't anything. And it came down to money, but we would have been willing to put in our own two quid.
I, I think it's in, in that, in that context, just the shift that we're going to make next. At the moment, the trust, it, it, it provides funding to about thirty different community groups. One of those is the parent council. We've got, we've got two primary schools in the area. So we, we obviously, I say we, the, the trust contributes money to the parent council so that the kids can go skiing and, 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 and stuff like that. Where we want to in terms of resilience and localism is the next step will be that. We'll, we'll find somebody in the area that can lead the, of the grade eight, the strand around education. And we want the community then to start taking overview of educational provision. So, because, because at the moment, if there's a school that's not doing particularly well and the kids have been moved out of the area. It's just a conversation between the school and the parent council. We now want this to be a conversation that's held by the community. With the support of an educationalist, that's looking at the quality of the provision broadly from preschool. Through to twelve, when they, when, when they go into Inverness for, for their, so it's, it's this empowerment around critical areas. To ensure we're driving it as effectively as possible. As, not necessarily as confidence falls, but as the capacity for the educational authority to do this themselves. Is undermined by a lack of funding, we think there's now an opportunity for the local community to not, not in conflict, but in partnership. Take more responsibility for the quality of provision of the education service.
And what's really interesting on this particular one, again, coming back, it's things that, so, um. After-school clubs or after-school care and, and, and childcare was one of the things that came through in the community action plan. And I had no intention of touching it because I just didn't know enough about the area. But when we started to have our conversations with the potential action groups to, to sort, to develop those. A group of parents said, we want to take this forward. And so they took ownership of it. Now, within twelve months, they've worked, worked on a partnership. With a, an external stakeholder, uh, I think it's through the local authority, who are providing funds for at least a childcare person. So, um, we now have been able to advertise it through the trust that there's, that they have got funding for having. For, for paying someone to do childcare in the local area. And uh, somebody from that group has said, oh, that's good for me, I want to try and, I'm going to apply for that. So it's creating employment in the local area. Uh, but it's also providing a need of childcare for some people. And the next step is we're working with the school heads on after-school care. And again, suddenly we find ourselves working with other stakeholders and directing not only our resources. But uh, the local authority's resources to the direction where it should go, not trying to second guess it.
Okay.
So that's what's come out the community action plan in terms of that, that particular subject. Tony and Garrett, thank you very much. It's been a superb presentation. I'm going to have to dodge our, so we have a bit of a break before our next speakers. But it, what's been fascinating about it, um, is your level, so you have taken control as a community trust. But your desire to devolve that power down is really now very, very explicit, um, which is really heartening to see. And in some ways, what you're describing is a return to borough councils, I am almost, because our local authorities are. Unusually large, uh, let's put it that way. Uh, that's something that we need to think about. You've also touched on points around. I think the point you made around where children, where parents take, send their children to school is interesting. Because that taps into other life patterns which determines why, where people choose to use services, which comes into the twenty-minute neighbourhood kind of. Agency and how people live in the spaces and they live in, and the, the sort of funding of things, I was like. We're looking at Aberdeen closing libraries while Aberdeen's had, um, liquid gold pumped through it. And, but doesn't seem to have benefited from it in a way. And I suppose what you're talking about with the wind turbines, that is a, a, a similar analogy to uh, be there. But one of the main reasons that we wanted to invite you to speak today was because you're achieving a lot. It's impressive, it's coherent, but you have a, an income. And a lot of the presentations we've had before from a community perspective is communities are trying to deliver things without seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds coming uh, through them. And so I think it's important for us to be able to feed this back to Scottish government in the communities, you can empower communities through policy and legislation. But the change comes when there is actual resource, it's human resource, but that human resource is a paid resource. And your sort of professional approach to it is certainly something that we will be able to share with other people as a, as a good project. And Ewan, I suppose there is uh, an example of that, uh, I think we touched on it before, but it's, it's, it's Covid response. Um, and I was part of a community before this one, which uh, uh, received funds from Covid response and. They had a fundraiser, they managed to turn that around within, within two weeks to get that, that funding in. And that kept that group going for another two years. And able to respond to what was needed in terms of providing larders and, and food for people. And it was, you know, it was what, seventy or eighty thousand pounds, but it just shows that even with a small amount of money. And, and a mechanism to do that and a, a direction from a local development plan, a community action plan, that you can. Um, uh, meet the needs of the community at that time. And I always say, it, it was Covid at that time, but if they'd been given seventy thousand pounds to deal with anything, they would have made it. Turn into five hundred thousand pounds, so. Yeah. Well, thank you very much. You've had a very good response from, um, the audience in the chat. Uh, uh, hopefully you'll stay with us for the, for the next presentation, but I'm now going to draw a, a close to the session. Thank you both again. Um, and I'll see everyone in ten minutes, a quarter past eleven.
Thank you for listening. Thank you for listening.
Coffee, um. And welcome back to the second half of the morning. And it's obviously been interesting hearing this morning around the provision of amenities and services. Uh, for communities. And so that's a, a, a helpful approach to hear today because I suppose some of the, um, events that we've had previously have, there's been. Of quite a focus on active travel and, and transport connections, which are obviously underpinning some of what we heard. Uh, from Tony and Gareth, uh, but the actual provision of services within communities is obviously key to making sure that they, um, do operate. Within a sort of living well locally concept, particularly in Scotland. Um, but what we are going to move on to now, um, is we are hoping to hear from Anne Doherty from Living Streets. Who, as I mentioned, presented to us, um, a number of months ago, uh, they were working on some, uh, early. Uh, research, uh, in North Lanarkshire, um, which they touched on at that presentation. And they have now completed that. And there was a report that came out, I think, a fortnight ago, which we will no doubt share with the chat, Anne is showing it to you. Um, it's, it's fuzzing it out as if it's, as if it's being censored. Uh, which I'm sure, I'm sure it is necessary, but, um, I will now hand over to Anne to, um, share her presentation. And we'll hear more about the research that Living Streets have done. We may also hear from Kate Joster, who also is with Living Streets, she is uh, on the call as well. So if a disembodied voice appears or, um, Anne calls in, it's Kate. You're on mute, Anne.
Thanks, Ewan. Yeah, just a quick chat for you. Yeah, we will come to the report, you can't quite see it because of the background, but, but it is there. It's just to prove that the report does exist. Thank you so much for inviting me to come along and tell you about it. I will attempt to share my screen if I can find the bit that allows me to share my screen. And. Hopefully. You can now.
That's, that's.
Is that working?
It's working for us.
Perfect. So, yes, um. Just in case anybody doesn't know who we are, I think you all do know me, us at Living Streets, but we are part of the UK charity for everyday walking. We want to inspire and support people to walk more and we want pavements and footpaths that are pleasant and easy and happy and nice places. And, and we do lots of campaigns. There's lots of information on our website, so if you'd like to get involved in our pavement parking or cut the clutter. Or safer routes to school or attacking air pollution, do go and have a look there. So. Twenty-minute neighbourhoods, what are they? Well, as we mostly know here, they're great in theory, um, they, they are. Part of the government's, um. Programme for implementation, so they're very important in, in terms of, of moving forward and sustainable lifestyles and travel. And, and, and promoting all of that. Um, however, the research for them in terms of the twenty minutes at any rate is not as robust as you might imagine. It is there, but it's mainly based on one paper about walking times. And the pictures here indicate that, you know, the idea of the twenty-minute walk, it very much depends on your age and stage in life and whether you've got. A buggy to push or a wheelchair or anything else. So we have defined it as living locally. And meaning that a person can reach all their essential needs on foot, um, within a distance that they are comfortable and willing to. Travel, walk, queer, however they might get there. And we know that the idea of living locally resonates with people, um, people feel it is a good idea. And, and, and they understand the, the concept, they understand that there can be health benefits. Um, that there's benefits to the planet, that, um, it makes neighbourhoods potentially more livable. Um, and if they can get more connectivity between, between groups and, you know, when, when, um. Tony and Gareth were speaking, you know, I just, the importance of that connectivity and of people feeling part of a community is, is clearly very important. So the idea of living locally is something that people can certainly relate to. However, when you speak to people about what their neighbourhood is like to live in and how they live their lives. The picture is somewhat more complex and I think, again, just going back to the presentation we had and before the break. Tony and Gareth outlined just how incredibly complex it can become, the number of different issues that you touch upon that, just living locally. It sounds, oh yeah, that's great. And during Covid, we were all absolutely up for it and, and, well, whether we were or not, we were, we had to. And we became very innovative and, and lots of really exciting ideas definitely came out at that time. But actually, the picture of doing it long term is, is quite complex. So, yes, we have been looking at the work around twenty-minute neighbourhoods. And we have been asking the communities, different communities, what their experience of what it would mean to them. Because in the research, as I mentioned, it's not necessarily as broad as you might imagine, given the amount of coverage. And, and the high profile that twenty-minute neighbourhoods have had. And we wanted to know, what, what does twenty-minute neighbourhood mean to communities? So we did some street audits, we did some questionnaires, we did some workshops, we had lots of conversations, we did some webinars. We sought out disability groups, youth groups, older people, parents. We spoke to as many people as we could find about what living locally meant to them. And what people told us was not necessarily the most. Encouraging responses. Um, again, the idea is great, but it was, well, you know, access. Often feels like an afterthought and that can be things like, you know, it's just difficult to walk, there's, there's no continuous pavement or there's no dropped curb. Or I can't get back on the pavement in my wheel, wheelchair or my scooter. Maintenance and care, this, we have been working with communities and, and you all have, I'm not telling you anything I'm sure that you don't already know. But honestly, maintenance and care of existing communities, you know, the, the number of times people just said, you know, twenty-minute neighbourhood's great. I just want to be able to get out of my house, um, and, and use the pavements that are there. So that's a massive issue. Safe crossing point, points, um, the picture here shows the, the, the area, it's actually not the bit that's particularly hazardous. But one of the people we spoke to in, 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 just outside of Airdrie in Calder Crooks was saying that the area around the main shops is, is really hazardous. Because it's been allowed to become overgrown and it's not great. And there was a great call for having more shops. I mean, the picture there, hi, you know, kind of shows if that's your local shops. Really, how are you going to live locally? But, but that said, the people that want to access those local shops just said. If we could just get round about the local shops, that would be a great start. Roundabout the local shops, that would be a great start. And that relates to, Ewan was saying as well, we were talking about facilities more and services that people want, but a lot of that does hinge on public transport. And that was certainly something that came out in our research. So our methodology was really quite straightforward. Um we we asked people. Where they'd been and how they got there. And we did a workshop and it was. Quite fascinating with primary age children. It was at a youth group, it wasn't in the school setting, but it was primary age and children that we worked with. And most of the ones that were there. Actually already walked to school. That was something that they 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 did regularly. But what we found interesting with that, especially given that in Living Streets, we have a big schools programme and we very much promote walking to school as one of the ways we can get people used to walking. We can get people out their cars, we can encourage. And or discourage the the congestion at the school gates, which can be really tricky for a lot of areas. So we 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 have a programme for walking to school, but a lot of the children that we happened to meet in the in the youth group we went to. They already walked to school, but they were driven almost everywhere else. Um and there are various reasons for that. Um it was about time, it was about other family commitments, it was about perceptions of time, it was about. Adults who were making the decisions, not the children. It was about perceptions of safety of the children to walk to places on their own. It was, you know, um whether you could fit in homework, tea. And get to the youth group, it was all of these things. Um so that was that was quite interesting. But we also did. A workshop in Erdre with teenagers. And they went to lots of places. Now, Erdre is a great example of somewhere that that really could be seen as as a, you know, most of the facilities you would want on a daily basis. Are 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 there. And the teenagers in Erdre, they walked pretty much everywhere. They. Occasionally would get a train into Glasgow, some of them. But a lot of them, they were, they just walked about in Erdre and that's and that's what they, that's how they got about. So that we found that quite interesting. And adults that we 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 did a sort of pop up consultation. Now, this, it's, again, all of these were small numbers, this, this was more in depth rather than lots of big. We didn't have a massive um. Um. Research group that we spoke to, it was small numbers, but the adults that we spoke to. Those of them, um and this was in Dunblane, I think, with the adults, and they they again lived in 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 potentially a twenty minute neighbourhood. Uh lots of local amenities and they and and in fact, they could also um get most of their food that they needed. Um they could get m- most, most things, but. They didn't choose to shop in the local shops necessarily because they were more expensive and had less choice. So economically, it made a lot more sense for them to drive to the supermarket. Um. And I think that's really important. They also, a lot of them drove to work. Um they they they. Drove to hospitals, they drove to. Children's activities. So for some things, they walked and they enjoyed the fact that they could walk and. But they basically said, there's more we could do in our local neighbourhood, but but it's not economical for us to do it. So we have to leave the neighbourhood. And when we leave the neighbourhood, we drive. So. That's been, you know, that's quite a big range quickly gone through. We it was it was a lot more work than that makes I feel it sound. All all the conversations, but what we learned from communities in a nutshell was if you can't walk the whole route, you can't make the journey. And that can be really frustrating to people because they. One person was telling us what lovely walks they had in the area, but they couldn't use them because there were steps, so they they couldn't use that walk. And in fact. That particular example um. Came from Shotts and they have a really fantastic health centre in Shotts. And immediately outside the health centre, they have some very lovely pavements and, you know. One of the things I've found since working for Living Streets is that I often look and see and, oh. There's a lovely pavement, is my thought. Or more usually, if I'm honest, there's not such a lovely pavement. But so I particularly noticed the lovely pavements in in near the Sh- the Shotts Health Centre. But for one of the local nearest housing estates, where again, it was potentially walkable distance to the health centre. But the route you took, one way took you. And at one point, the pavements completely disappeared. It was just one street, one road that had no pavement. And only for a short distance, but. Significant distance and it was a busy road and it was on a on a slope and there is just no way you would walk on that road with children, with older people, or if you felt at all. Um. Unsafe or if you had any mobility issues, you just even even as a fully. Able-bodied, confident person, I don't think you'd walk on that road without the pavement there because it just wasn't safe to do so. So. There was a missing pavement and the alternative route, which was one of the beautiful walks, had steps. Lot and quite a lot of steep steps. You'll see that if you go to a report, the photograph of the steps there. So basically. That you could not walk to the health centre. So that that's a bit of an issue. And again, going back to the choice. If you live locally, you know, people were saying, yeah, we'd love to live locally, but actually all we've got is a hairdresser or a nail bar and the bookies. And, you know, if we're lucky, we've got one local shop. So we come into the economics of of situations and and how do we attract local businesses? Um and there we have the quote that mum says, we don't have time to have dinner and walk to the youth club. So. You know, kids are saying, well, you know, they don't make the choice, or families are saying. You come in, you've got to get the homework done, you've got to get them fed, then you've. The club starts at six o'clock, you simply don't have time to walk. And I think. This. Slightly reflects that, you know, to use the old quote, well, I wouldn't start from here. Um we are where we are. But one of the biggest challenges is retrofitting. Our our communities were. Have been developed over the last sixty years around the car. And that doesn't disappear overnight. So we need to think about how we can turn communities that we live in. And the places that we shop and the places that we work into functioning twenty minute neighbourhoods. And I think that's a big question. Uh I think what we're finding through our our research is that. People are interested in this, people are excited by this as an idea. People are not sure about certain aspects of it. And that. Most of all, it's complicated. It's. To do it, you need to have a detailed understanding of place and what place means to people. You need to involve economics, you need to consider our lifestyles, you need to look at our working patterns, you need to think about family structures. Again, a lot of women will work, will walk more because they walk children to school. A lot of the families that we spoke to struggled because they didn't have a car and they they could only walk and obviously. People without cars are 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 our climate heroes, we need them. But the many of them don't have a car because they can't afford a car. And if they could, they would, because our whole. Setup is is roundabout cars. So and and we come back to, you know, if we if we don't want people to have cars. And we do need flexibility if where they can get to, it comes back to public transport. So it's exciting, but it's complicated. Hopefully, that has whetted your appetite for a little bit more, which you can find in our. A recently published twenty minute neighbourhoods, a community perspective. We've put the link in that in 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 on the slide and slides will will, I think, will be shared with everybody. Um. And I'm very happy to take any questions and Kate will help me out with any answers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anne. Um. I'm glad you've you've presented what your report um says. Well, um. I was wondering, if anyone's got any questions, put your hand up as before. And if you want to stop sharing your slides, we can then see your hands going up. Or if you've got questions for the chat, uh feel free. Um. I will hold my questions. Derek has a question. Derek, what's your question?
Thanks, Ewan. Just to just to kick kick things off, and one of the kind of themes from both presentations, I think for me is around the kind of sense of of timelessness. And Tony and Gareth said earlier, they're kind of trying to rebuild. Much of what they're doing is rebuilding a kind of social infrastructure that's that's been lost with the the decline of churches and and pubs. And they started work before twenty minute neighbourhoods, Living Streets, have always been around for for some time. And I don't know if you'll mind me using the phrase uh um flavour of the month, um but I think it actually will be around after twenty minute neighbourhoods, maybe a a bit lower down the 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 priority list. But I've been around and I've I've been working for stuff for about twenty years now and and we do have these uh. Next communities or inclusive economic growth in this phase where everyone's talking about something and ministers are 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 busy and happy and then. Political cycle moves on and suddenly we've 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 moved on. So really just my question is really around them. How how useful the concept is is to you to Living Streets as a recognition from other public bodies that this is something we need to. Need to improve, need to make our places better to 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 move around. Are you kind of rolling your eyes and saying, yeah, this we've always known this and. Will always be the uh uh bang on a person. Another point I just want to make, really like that finding it's it is complicated. This is really kind of one of surf's. Finding principles regeneration is is complicated, it's holistic, involves all these multiple actors and economic, physical, social, social themes. It's a bit long term, it's not about these kind of short term, short term interventions. So I think that's a very. Uh uh simple but powerful finding and we'll kind of need to be very mindful of that of of that.
Yeah, I thi- I think. Um for me, it's. It's, I think that it is a useful concept to some extent. I I I I'm not quite as excited about it as I was when it first. Became part of the the programme of government because I think some something about profile and talking about place. We've we've had a bit of a mention of the place plans earlier and honestly, you know, again, I totally take my hat off to Strathairk and Foyers Community Trust. Because I think they're they're doing an amazing piece of work. And and as, you know, they also said they have some income and they've professionalised it. And that is the point, you have to professionalise it, communities have to professionalise. Place plans are so complex, you really, the communities I work with. There is no way on this planet that without support, they could even begin to understand a place plan. So if this is something that can help get that message over about living locally, if we can simplify, if we can use language that resonates with people. And they can use that language to say what they want, then that is absolutely fantastic. If there was money to go with the twenty minute neighbourhoods, resource to go with the twenty minute neighbourhoods, then I think we would be, I would be jumping up and down with excitement. But for the moment, whilst they are simply a concept and an idea and a vision, they they, I think they still have a use as that to say, well, what would it? Making us ask the questions, what do we need to do? And I think that's what Covid, you know, kind of gave us this. This idea, we were going on willy nilly, just organising everything around the car and. The reality, I would say, is we still are, but there is at least. There is a stop in the conversation to say, maybe we should think about it differently. And maybe we could get that conversation to looking about living locally. But that, I think, has to happen on a much, you know, it has to be a a whole society conversation because of complexity.
And I think, I mean, I think what we find repeatedly um is that. The high level stuff is great. What's coming down from on high, so at Scottish government level, we have got strategy after strategy, after policy, after planning document. That if our communities were like that, transformed into something that fitted all of those visions and aims. We'd be living pretty good lives in pretty good communities and be on track to meet some of our climate obligations. Um that is not going to happen because at every other level between airy fairy and the street, that's not what's happening. You know, local government is just not doing the stuff. Um communities don't know how to engage with this stuff, they're not being given. Opportunity, they're not being given language, they're not being given the right kind of spaces. So. It it, you know, some communities are doing brilliant things, some projects within communities are doing brilliant things. But there is this this whistling void in between the vision and what's happening in the street as you look outside your window. And the inability to make those connections means that. People are not going to be able to engage with this, it just is so far from what they're experiencing when they step outside their front doors.
Thank you very much, both. And I strongly agree with um what you both said and answer the question, Derek. And Nick, you put your hand up.
Yeah, um it's come back to to a question I asked for the previous speakers. Which is, um so it's clear that a local place plan is is uh you know, quite a crucial element of uh getting. Uh things right in order to uh create a uh and retrofit and um. Move towards twenty minute neighbourhood. But uh so I live in a um and I work with a community council in a suburban area of Edinburgh. And our difficulty, I think, is that the council, they have a rather top-down approach towards local place plans. And so we're not being encouraged to uh move forward ourselves and be involved with the local place plan. But. Wh- what I'm thinking is that actually, you know, maybe we need to take the initiative here and we need to uh uh involve our own community in. Um uh developing the um. The idea of both twenty minute neighbourhoods and uh taking ownership of its own um ver- hyper-local planning, if you like. Um so I'm just wondering, you know. How do we do that? You know, what are the, what are the first steps? I suppose that's the thing is that people say, you know, do a local place plan. Well, you know, what are the. Steps before that that we need to do uh in order to uh move in that direction?
And and yes, and 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 I think some of what Anne was just talking about in in the presentation. Kind of reveals the layers of complexity that are behind that. So it's. People being too busy to to walk their kid to youth club. How are they going to be getting involved in the local place plan? The people, you know, the people who are getting involved in that are people who have. The cultural competence to engage with um. Some a document like that or a, you know, who feel like they're going to be listened to, who feel like they have the skills, who feel like they have the right kind of literacies. Um they are also people who've got time, so um they're more likely to be men. Uh they're more likely to um be not living in poverty. Um they're more likely to not be parenting potentially or caring. So then we end up with exactly the people who have already always been doing our planning, doing our planning and calling themselves community. Uh while they do it. So the 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 type of engagement that we do needs to be completely different. It needs to take into account. That people need to be able to afford uh the the time, space, the intellectual. Um the 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 brain space to do it. Um so we need to go to communities and we need to systematically seek to. Represent the people within the communities that haven't already been heard from. Um so I mean, it's it's really quite a profound piece of change. Um we need, for example, be going to carers groups and saying. You know, you who have no time at all and who are usually encountering mobility. Challenges of of various kinds, we need to be going to disabled people's groups, we need to be going to. Um we need to be going to food banks and seeing if people can spare five minutes there, they probably can't because they would like to be fed before they're asked these kind of questions. You know, it's it's how do we involve the people we haven't heard from because we have. The same people still talking. And and it's just the understanding of what it takes to do community engagement. You do not just put up an eighty-page PDF on a website and say, we're consulting you. It is ridiculous to pretend that we're anywhere near. Really involving the people who haven't been heard from before. Um right, that's a rant that I'm going to stop now.
But it I think it is, it's that complexity. And I think I I think actually that raises, uh you know. Uh uh a really important point in our our learning stroke frustration that. We. Or have got to the point where we feel we we have gone and we've consulted with quite a lot of communities and quite wide-ranging and we've tried to be more innovative and more. Inclusive to get those. Different views. But there's a danger there because if if councils and the government and others are not listening and don't respond. You're raising expectations, you know, so for your group in in suburban Edinburgh as well. It's like, actually, there are things you could do, there are things you could look at the place plan, you could look at some of the resources, we could, you know. But if nobody's going to listen to what you're saying. That's then wasting your time. And and whilst everybody's time is precious, some people's time is even more precious because they they are time poor, they are, they are poor, they are. All of these other issues. And I think there is something in there inherently about consultation and what we really mean by it and. And how the place plans really reflect. And I, you know, I I think, yeah, so many of the of the way places are looked at. It's 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 almost as if pe- people feel they can be reduced to a map. Now, you know, I love a map, but if if you just look at a map, that that's only one very small part of, I mean, we use maps in our methodology, we got people to look at maps. But we listen to their stories about how they got there, why they went, the way as Kate, you know, the the fact that the the child was able to tell us. We drove there because not just, oh, we went that route and we, you know, and and the map is only the starting point. So. Yeah, that that's not a very helpful answer to you, Nick, I'm afraid. There are things you can do, we can do things, you can you can bring communities together, you can ask them an experience of place and you can begin to do it. But I think you have to know that somebody. ask them an experience of place and you can begin to do it. But I think you have to know that somebody's going to listen to you.
And I think the other, I mean, there's another thing also, which is about how folk who aren't involved in this stuff regularly experience the time periods involved. People expect to see change. They might not, you know, they're they're saying my children can't get to primary school safely. They might well not see change before their kids are out of primary school. And so how do we engage people for change that is not actually going to impact on the issues that they're talking about now for them personally? Yes, for their neighbours, yes, for the next generation, but probably not for them.
I think an answer to that, actually, to me, one of the, well, not easy one, but basic one is the maintenance and care aspect. And, you know, it covers a whole field of stuff, but it's, you know, if we're not getting that right, then, you know, everyone, we can ignore everything, other aspirations if we can get something as fucking as that correct.
Yes. And that again is is potentially a funding issue as well. So infrastructure projects will get funded, but sweeping the infrastructure projects every week for the rest of forever doesn't get funded.
It's like, it's like core funding, you know, no one wants to do core funding. Everyone wants a shiny project. No one, everyone wants a new bridge. But do they want to pay for the the gutters to be cleared regularly? I mean, Tony, you had your hand up.
Yeah, it was, it was just to touch on a few points that had made. I mean, I've worked in in a number of communities, one of which I suppose would be an old miners area, very working class, et cetera. I I've never in my time in 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 these organisations ever differentiated between the capacity of those groups. Uh. There's always people within a community that can help take things forward. And I also think in terms of place planning, this is an interesting concept, but actually in deprived neighbourhoods, place planning already exists. They just, perhaps they they don't call it that. But they already, their lifestyle, which touches one and and touched on, means that they they create that environment at a local level themselves. Um, you know, they 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 do create the the facility that they they need, whether it's a gym or whatever, or they have a community centre and the 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 the, you know, the the only thing that's perhaps not right about that area and in some areas, I mean, it was West London that I I'm talking about specifically. The council was starting to make moves towards improving the property there, improving streets, improving pathways, et cetera, et cetera. So it does, it does exist. But in terms of consultation, which is Kate's point, is sometimes I think it's it's is that people, when they're consulted, the only thing that the people who are consulting them on should promise them, and I've done this in the ten or twelve community consultations that we've we've done, is we report back what the findings were. Because that's as far as we can go, because, you know, some of those areas were underfunded. They didn't have the ability to do that. So it's really just not raising expectations, but actually telling people, this is generally what you see. And from my experience, after we've done the consultation um in the areas that I've been involved in, we do our skills and activities workshops, well, not workshops, we we do a we put it out to the community and ask, can anybody deliver on these things? Do you have the skills and the ability to do this? And and, you know, nine times out of ten, we get somebody back who, you know, they, the job might be working in finance or whatever it is, but actually their interest is digging a hole. You know, that's what that was, that's the, you know, that that's what their skill, that's what their hobby is. And we we look to communities to help deliver some of these things. So I I I I do understand what what you're saying about, you know, high, high plans and stuff in some communities. But it is about the lifestyle and some of this lifestyle already exists. It just needs support in some way.
Yes, but I also think we need to understand the structural inequalities and who does have the ability to get involved in this stuff. I think, you know, it's it's very easy to say, oh, yes, some communities are doing things. Who in communities is doing things? And who are they doing it for? Um. We need to to be quite structured in our understanding when we're we're talking about involvement.
We have another question from Ian Wardrop asking, and I think the answer to this might be yes, and I will change it slightly. He's saying, do you think the NHS should contribute to making walking easier, more attractive as part of improving society's health? Yes. How do you think the NHS could do that?
I think that's a great question. Um, I I again, I think it's complicated. I think um there are, this goes from very small practical things to bigger, more strategic, slightly more challenging things. For example, on a small practical thing, um, we we have got a report recently done on Kate, tell me what the title of the report is. Falls, trips, slips and falls. Yeah, the the England edition, we're hopefully going to be doing a Scottish edition soon.
Um. Slips, trips and falls. I I slip over the title of that. Thank you. Um. Just to say, I am going to have to go in just one minute. There's somebody at my door. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Kate.
Um, so we have looked at the number of of slips and trips and falls in 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 England with a view to to how the NHS um interplays with with um places and pavements in particular. Um, so one of the issues, for example, in Scotland is if you are somebody who has a fall, particularly for an older person, if that happens in the house, you will get possibly a visit from occupational therapy and they'll review your living conditions and they record where the fall happened. So they can see if there's a pattern that you keep tripping over the rug. If you have a fall outside, it's not recorded. It's not recorded where or why. So there are simple things like, actually, let's record. And we've had, we're having those discussions with NHS and and we'd we'd, we we did pilot or we were piloting again in North Lanetshire. The falls team there were great and they were really keen to to record where falls happened. But we just agreed to do that when lockdown came, so nobody was going outside, so falls reduced. So that didn't really work. So this is, you know, best laid plans. So there are things like that can do. But the other thing that we did with with the with the report, the England report, which again is on our website if if you want it, um, was look at the role of insurance and and how councils plan and get the insurance for it. So there are some practical things about linking the financial output of the NHS and insurance and pay out the financial output of local authorities with the impact on the NHS. So there's some clever economics there that I think we need to be looking at to 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 unpick this. One of the things we did in in a previous project in Edinburgh was, um, we successfully got some pavements re resurfaced um beside a a sheltered housing development or it's a sheltered housing development that was individual houses on a street. You wouldn't have, you know, it would just look like any other street and the pavements weren't worse than any other pavements, but for the particular people that lived in that area, they they were just such a barrier. And we asked the people there to record their own falls. And between February and July, when they did this, they recorded fourteen falls, one of which resulted in a nine day stay in hospital. Now, that was a very powerful argument for getting those pavements done, but we still had to find friendly, helpful, wonderful people in City of Edinburgh Council who came and said, your pavements don't meet the criteria for improvement, but you know what? We're going to just find some money and do it anyway. So thank you to those guys. Um, neither of them are in the same job as they were. I don't know if that's related. Um, but you know, so I think I think the short answer, as you said, Ewan, is absolutely yes, but we need to make those arguments. We need to help people because it's a bit like the Health and Social Care partnerships that eventually realised it's not quite worked as they planned, that the need to not worry whose budget it was coming from, whether it was social work or health. It was to get the job done and it's that similar exercise needs to be done, but looking at how that's not really helped with the HSCPs, I don't know. So.
Uh, I think that taps, that taps into some of the comments at the end of Gareth's presentation around preventative and and possibly the the Peckham experiment, which I have, I'm also unaware of and I will be looking this up after after today's meeting. And the preventative spend, whose budget that, everyone will then discuss whose budget does that come out of? It's a saving for the NHS. Why should why should the NHS be doing street repairs? Seems it seems illogical. We know this NHS is already strapped for cash. So if we are reducing a demand of the NHS, the the money then goes further for other more things that can't be prevented. Um, that is an issue. One of the things I wanted to ask you, um, and like you, my feeling around to, and I think, you know, the twenty minute neighbourhood sort of practice network that we hold, I view as an inquiry into twenty minute neighbourhoods. I think on our website, we're probably champions of the twenty minute neighbourhood concept. Um, because that's what we were wanted to be. But we're inquiring into what this means and we're inquiring as, I think you and Kate have definitely picked up on what this means in more deprived areas. I like it as a snappy thing that's caught some people's attention and made them think more closely about living locally. And I've witnessed politicians engaging with it in a way that is helpful. My analysis is that the twenty minute neighbourhood policy is identical to Scottish planning policy for twenty, over twenty years, although there is a shift from twenty years ago where car driving had parity with um active travel. It probably wasn't called it then. Um, whereas now there is a, there is an elevation of of active travel. But one of the things I'm, that makes me uneasy about it is I can see twenty minute neighbourhood branding being used for new development that looks to me identical to car centred development. And I I'm and I'm intrigued by this because I think developers have got on board with it. And probably this is the thing, as Derek has said, it's the flavour of the month, so they're using it. But I know you've done analysis of new developments and I know you, a few years ago you did it. And I suppose, do you have any observations on on when we're creating new places, whether you think they will actually shift being less car oriented?
I think that's a million dollar question, Ewan. I think my own personal answer to that is I haven't seen no indication of that whatsoever. I I think the 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 follow up is we have to insist on that. We have to push for that. We have to make that happen. Because, you know, one of my frustrations is we look at NPF four and all the, and lots of other policies on the twenty minute neighbourhood. And as I think Kate said as well, all the strategies that are there, there's there's so much good stuff, but the lag between the houses that are being built now. Um, and what we're seeing, the the rhetoric isn't, and 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 the the fact that the developers have hijacked the twenty minute and I deliberately say hijacked because that's to me what it looks like. They've hijacked the twenty minute neighbourhood so cleverly and made out that these, and they've just changed the packaging and and they're not changing it because and and it does come back to me the idea of the of public transport because, you know, unless we really we're so far from looking at changing the way we work. I mean, I was really quite amazed at how quickly after Covid, people went back to traditional working patterns. Very, very quick. I mean, we 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 use a shared office hub and there are more community, there there are some changes. I'm not saying it's all gone back to exactly as it was because that's not how it is, but the vast majority have gone back and and the the rush hour traffic is worse than it was before Covid and all of the rest of it. So, you know, that's going to take a massive change. So there's still this expectation that you drive to work, you drive, and and I think that's one of the things we highlighted, that for people who did drive, they they were happy to do their twenty minute local shopping for bits and pieces, but they still left the neighbourhood and the minute they left the neighbourhood, they went in their car. So, do you know, I kind of think, and that was partly because they're used to using their cars. They wanted to use their cars because perceptions of benefits of choice and so on, but also because there isn't the public transport infrastructure and you know, um, I think Tony and Gareth are making the point that people would say they would pay an extra two pounds, just have the bus there. But buses shouldn't be seen as a form of of profit. Buses, you know, it's 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 a, it's a decision we have to make. What do we want? And and if we're not, so, yeah, I I don't see any indication that the new developments are being less, at the moment, less car centric than they've always been or they have been for the last sixty years. And I think we need to challenge that. And I hope that's where I'm hopeful that twenty minute neighbourhoods can be useful as a way of making that resonate with people. But because of the way it's been almost flipped, that's not how it's gone so far. I don't know if we can, I'm still hopeful we can change that.
I I would do the public transport to me is also deeply key to that because I think you, the economics of ten to the neighbourhood is the thing that is absent in some of our policy discussion around it because um there are issues around affordability of food. And so if you're going to get food that is affordable, and I'm not saying that that, and there's even questions around affordability of food because
Yes.
affordable food is maybe not good food and affordable food is maybe not produced in a good way that's good for the environment. But from a a day to day basis, the ability of the 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 quantity of shoppers you need for affordable food isn't determined within the policy.
And that that we, I should have also mentioned, um, we had our big walking seminar just the other week and we'll be writing a report for that because we we're beginning to, and we have a speaker there who was talking about density and and exactly how many people do you need to make a twenty neighborhood? And I think people often confuse density with overcrowding and and it's absolutely not that. And we we know that, you know, and we have to get that message out because there is a density that you need to make services viable for. And and there are calculations, you know, that we could do and we could look at how, you know, it comes to where we build the affordable housing or social rented housing. There's so many things that we actually could do that would begin to change the the direction of travel, I think, if you'll pardon the pun. And and I just think there's there's, there is an opportunity here, but it feels like it's just being watered down to sit on the shelf with all the other previous opportunities and going to that place where great ideas end up.
And I think we're at the point where we have to make sure that we don't get ground down by that, that we keep pushing on it so that we make the previous policies that have not delivered, that we make this one actually meaningfully delivered. There was a question from Paul Davis, which is walking, we know is good for physical and mental health, and perhaps also slowing the pace of modern life. Is there any evidence that walking to more places helps with this, enabling a better focus on other aspects of daily life? Or is modern life simply go, go, go?
I I think there's overwhelming evidence that the more we, this a slightly slower pace of life and walking absolutely is a good idea. And 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 I think there's also beginning to be some evidence, I can't quote your reference here, I'm trying to think and I can't think quickly enough and Kate's not here. She's better at these things. Um, but that I know that there is evidence that that really our modern life is unhealthy in every aspect. And and and, you know, and I mean, I, you know, just again, on a personal level, I I find it fascinating that that we we measure success on economic growth and we measure economic growth on on more resources and more things that we can't do and that are killing the planet. So our very measurement of success and and very basis of modern life is designed, you know, overtly to to destroy us and the planet along with us. So, you know, I think there is definitely evidence that walking more and not slowing down to the pace that we don't do anything, but I think you can do more by working smarter and not harder that, you know, and or or, you know, working at a pace that isn't killing us and the planet.
Okay, thank you very much. I mean, the conversation could go on for everyone. This is, um, is that one of the things I reflect on is, so I grew up in a suburban part of Edinburgh and it would now be deemed car centric. In the seventies, it wasn't, um, because people's lives were different, people's passions. And I would say, I grew up in a cul-de-sac, there were more women not working who had time to walk to the shops, which were a mile away. And they were probably just outside a twenty minute neighbourhood concept. Um, but there are totally different life patterns now. And so and the car becomes necessary to maintain that life pattern and to meet your basic economic needs. And that is, so the the land, the physical landscape hasn't changed and where the services are have not changed. But the way we are employed and the demands on our time are what has changed. And in talking in in talking about twenty minutes across a range of people, the sort of the economic decisions that people make around, so they live somewhere so their child can go to a good school, but they cannot afford either food or extracurricular activities in that area. So they're having to travel to that. And the public transport doesn't lead them to affordable places, so they have to use their car. And so these are very complex systems. And and we are unpicking sixty years worth of urban design and economic approach. I suppose you could say it's good. The new first minister has mentioned the wellbeing economy is still being central to um this government's approach, which is potentially moving away from GDP and community wealth building. The minister, Tom Arthur remains the minister for community wealth building. So there are indicators at a high level that the, we may continue to go in a direction that is looking at changing our lives quite differently, but it it will not happen overnight.
Yeah.
Does anyone have, before we finish the session, it's noon, I said we would wrap up um soon. If anyone got any final questions for Anne? Everyone's saying great session. We've had some good comments in the chat and some good observations um in the chat. So, uh, thank you very much, Anne, and thank you to Kate, who is no longer with us. And we'll look forward to see the report from the big wall uh as well.
Thank you.
Before we wind up today, I just wanted to sort of, um, give you a heads up around some changes that we're maybe going to make to the to the network. We've been exploring this for almost two years, um, the twenty minute neighbourhood uh concept and and the practice of it. And our our intention isn't to jettison it, but as today has kind of exemplified, the twenty minute neighbourhood is is linked to much wider issues. And I suppose Surf as a, as a regenerative, an organisation with a deep interest in regeneration, look at regeneration as a very holistic approach. And it's not just about active travel or twenty minutes. And it's about culture creativity. And it's about employment skills. And and it's about housing. And so we're looking at morphing this network into something a bit wider. We will possibly call it people in place. Uh, and to kind of focus Uh, and to kind of focus it around another high level agenda, the place principle, which may mean nothing to you. It doesn't matter if it means nothing to you. But to widen the network out into something that at each event, we explore something. That is around the place based approach and what that means, uh, for communities. So again, drawing on good practice like we've heard from Strachan Foyers. Or from researchers that we've, we've heard from Living Streets, but to broaden it beyond the, the boundaries of the twenty minute neighbourhood. One of the fascinating things about the very early, um, twenty minute neighbourhood discussions was, uh, don't get hung up on the twenty minutes and don't get hung up on the neighbourhood. Oh, why have it? Um, but it's about not getting fixed, fixed in that thing. So we're, so over the, this next year, we will be introducing. Wider topics, which you could look at through a twenty minute neighbourhood principle, but we'll be bringing things in. Affordable food is one that I've had a, a brief chat with somebody who's in the, in the meeting today as well. So some of the economics around, um, the place principle. So hopefully you will all stay with us with that. We will give you more information. We will. When the Scottish government do have a consultation on the twenty minute neighbourhood, um, guidance, we will. Have, they have, they will, they want to come and speak and they want to get feedback on that. So it'll be a case of introducing it. And so we will have another event that will be on twenty minute neighbourhoods. And, but we will be widening out, um, over the next few months and we hope to have four or five. On, online events. We will keep it online because we have such a great, uh. Geographic range of people who attend, uh, the event. And after today, there will be the usual email asking you for any comments around, uh, the event, but also asking you for ideas again. So now that you know that it's going wider than twenty minute neighbourhoods, we are looking at that place based work. And I think, I suppose. Based on some of the questions today, it might be interesting to have someone come and talk to us about local place plans. It could be Paz, I might, I know Erin Paz, I used to share an office space with them. And so there are topics that you think are of interest to you around, uh, place development. And then respond to the survey that's coming out after today's event. But that's, leaves me to wind up today. Thank you very much to our presenters, to Tony and Gareth and, and Kate. Um, and to all of you who have, uh, good great comments and questions, uh, into the chat, uh, at the side. And I hope you all have a very good afternoon and enjoy the Easter break when it comes for you. Thank you.